All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to Sunday Night Seminar. And wrapping up Revelation 3. Nope, Revelation 2. Forgot. It's gonna be a long night. And so anyways, I'm already working on 4, and so I'm trying to keep track of where I'm at. So yes, let's see. We are in 3. We are wrapping up the church to Sardis, the message to the church of Sardis. And let's go ahead and start with a word of prayer, and we will pick up at verse 5. So let's pray. Lord God, thank you for this time to study your word. I thank you for everyone here who has gathered here to study together in a, as a community of faith who holds your word in reverence, that as we study together, that your Spirit would speak to us, that as we walk through this, that we can translate it into our lives for your glory. Father, we pray tonight as we go through these churches, that the message that was so delivered to them 2,000 years ago, help us to understand the meaning of those words, and even as it was written to them, but retained for us. Help us to understand what this would mean for us today. Let us be challenged. And I pray our hearts and minds will be open to your moving in us and through us. Pray this for your glory in Jesus's name. All right. So last week, we were covering Sardis. We made it through Thyatira. And here we are at Sardis. So let's go ahead and read Revelation, chapter 3, 1 through 6. "To the angel of the church in Sardis write, he who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars says this, I know your deeds, that you have a name, that you are alive, but you are dead. Wake up and strengthen the things that remain, which were about to die; for I have not found your deeds completed in the sight of my God. So remember what you have received and heard, and keep it, and repent. Therefore, if you do not wake up, I will come like a thief, and you will not know at what hour I will come to you. But you have a few people in Sardis who have not soiled their garments, and they will walk with me in white, for they are worthy. He who overcomes will thus be clothed in white garments; and I will not erase his name from the book of life; and I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So as we were talking last week, just in the history of Sardis, devastated by earthquake. It was very wealthy at one time. It was a capital of the ancient kingdom of Lydia. And they even minted coinage, coins there, gold and silver. And it claimed to be the first to discover the art of dying wool. And so we already can see some of the references to the white garments and different things like that that Jesus is addressing. not a lot of strengths. As you can see, there's little to commend them. But what they have, they need to strengthen, right? And so they're definitely found lacking. And as we move forward here, coming into verse 5. "He who overcomes will thus be clothed in white garments; and I will not erase his name from the book of life; and I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels." So gonna get into all kinds of stuff here. So "To the overcomers, a threefold promise is given: one, they will be dressed in white; two, their names will not be blotted out of the book of life; and three, Christ will acknowledge them before God and his angels." The white garments or robes are mentioned seven times in the book of Revelation. But no distinctive pattern is established. So it's just kind of cool, seven times that they're mentioned, but there's no rhyme or reason. There's no distinct pattern there. The lay Odysseans are counseled to buy them to cover their shameful nakedness. And we'll get to that in verse 18. "The martyrs awaiting vindication are given white robes," chapter 6, verse 11. "In the heavenly throne room the twenty-four elders are dressed in white," chapter 4, verse 4. "And before the Lamb stands a great multitude wearing white robes that have been washed in his blood," chapter 7, verses 9 and 13. "The armies of heaven who appear with the warrior Messiah are dressed in fine linen, white and clean," chapter 19, verse 14. Sorry, no camouflage. "It would seem therefore that the white..." You ever thought about that? "It would seem therefore that the white garments promised to the overcomer here represent an attire appropriate to the heavenly state; since they are made white by being washed in the blood of the Lamb," chapter 7, verse 14. "The figure is highly appropriate to portray justification," so salvation. So the second promise is that the overcomer's name will not be blotted out of the book of life. The idea of a divine ledger is first mentioned in the Old Testament in Exodus, chapter 32, verses 32 and 33. So the context here. It's the golden calf. Affectionately called the golden calf incident, right? And Moses is coming down, and he is not happy, especially not happy with Aaron. And there's a back and forth. And then Moses goes back to the Lord to kind of mediate the situation. Because the Lord is ready to just wipe everybody out. I mean, this is really insightful because... Ah, let me find it here. Okay, on the, let's see. Ah, there we go. "Then Moses returned to the Lord," verse 31, "and said, Alas, this people has committed a great sin, and they have made a god of gold for themselves; but now, if you will, forgive their sin; and if not, please blot me out from your book which you have written." Wow. So Moses is putting his life on the line. And some would even see this as his salvation. "The Lord said to Moses, Whoever has sinned against me, I will blot him out of my book; but go now, lead the people where I told you." It goes from there. So the whole idea here is that they had sinned, and they were concerned. Moses was concerned. He said, "Look, don't wipe them out. If that's what you're gonna do, blot me out of your book of life." So this is a big deal. Now, let's see. We also see this mentioned in Psalm 69, verse 28. The question is, was that the first time mentioned in Scripture? And yes, it is.
So how would Moses know about the book of life?
That's a fantastic question. So if that was the first mention, how would Moses have even known that there was a book of life? That's such a great question, I don't even know. And you know, and it's important to understand that like, up until this time, Moses had been meeting with Yahweh from the time of the fiery bush, right? And so as they are meeting and talking, who knows how much is actually covered? That's why when we approach Scripture, it says what it says for our benefit. It is not an exhaustive recording of everything said. That's why we just can't approach Scripture as this exhaustive depository of truth. There is truth outside of Scripture just because Scripture was not written to be the end-all-only recording of truth. What it says is recording the redemptive story of humanity, to God's glory. So yeah, no, that's a fantastic question. And I think I just opened up a huge can of worms. But we can talk after, it's okay.
Just not now.
Just not now, that's right. So yeah, no, and that's... How many of those things are there? You know, that just pop up? And I think that, you know, anytime there's something that's mentioned for the first time, you're reading through the Bible. And that's why it's fun to read through the Bible in consecutive order, right? And you're reading through, and you come across something, and you're like, "That's new information." That's a new, you know, and kind of see it as maybe like, the people of God. Or maybe it's your actual first time ever reading through the Bible. I highly encourage it. And you're reading, and you're just like, you know, read it like, okay, hear me out here. Read it like some fiction book you just got at the library. It's not fiction. Don't misunderstand me. But read it with that level of like scrutiny, where you're trying to put the story together. I think a lot of times when we read Scripture, we're already cutting it up in our minds like a little fortune cookie. Or we're trying to draw out certain theological principles, and we're totally missing the narrative, the narrative of our redemption. And that there are those little breadcrumbs that connect to other themes, right? And so as you're reading it, and you read it, I mean, you know, there's, I think I mentioned Tolkien, you know, last week with Lord of the Rings and Cimmerillion. But you know, you read through that. There's so much detail in those books. But yet, you talk to some people. I mean, they know those figures and the lineage and the people group, you know, all that stuff. Getting some head nods here, I got you. And so, you know, and it's interesting because, because a lot of times when we're reading Scripture, we're skipping over the genealogies. Or we're not trying to piece those together. Those are even more important. They're so important that they show up even in the New Testament, and that's not to punish you. They are there to prove that Jesus is the Messiah. So all those genealogies that you wanted to skip in the Old Testament, Matthew has included that. Luke has included that as proof that Jesus is the Messiah, right? I mean, they're writing to an audience, and I mean, really in an evangelistic pattern of like, hey, here's our proof that he is who he is. That's where we're starting, right? And so it's just, it's amazing to kind of think about it that way. But when we read the Bible, do we read it with that lens? And it's not like you have to read it that way every single time. But if you were gonna read through the Bible in a year, do that. And do it in a consecutive order. And there's great apps out there like Uversion and things that'll take the prophetic books and insert those into the historical narrative. That's really cool. Because then you're reading about a place, and then all of a sudden, there's this prophet with this message, and you're like, oh, oh, that fits right there within that context. So that's a, that was a tangent. I accept that. But it's a fun one, right? So just how we piece those things together. And I still don't know the answer to your question. So all right, Psalm 69, verse 28. And this is an interesting psalm, one of vindication and judgment. But when we get to verse 28, and let me back up to 22, just at the beginning of the stanza. "May their table before them become a snare; and when they are in peace, may it become a trap; may their eyes grow dim so they cannot see; and make their loins shake continually. Pour out your indignation on them; and may your burning anger overtake them; may their camp be desolate; may none dwell in their tents; for they have persecuted him whom you yourself have smitten; and they tell of the pain of those whom you have wounded. Add iniquity to their iniquity; and may they not come into your righteousness; may they be blotted out of the book of life; and may they not be recorded with the righteous." All right. Now, in Hebrew poetry, you have one line that makes a statement, and then you have another line that's basically saying the same thing, just differently, right? So when we can take 28, "may they be blotted out of the book of life; and may they not be recorded with the righteous," that is communicating the same thing. Hebrew Poetry 101. So pretty fascinating. Next, we're gonna go to Daniel, chapter 12. "Now at that time, Michael, the great prince who stands guard over the sons of your people, will arise; and there will be a time of distress such as never occurred since there was a nation until that time. And at that time, your people, everyone who is found written in the book, will be rescued." All right, I'm gonna read the next verse, just 'cause it's so good. "Many of those who sleep in the dust of the ground will awake." That sounds like a resurrection, doesn't it? "These to everlasting life, but the others to disgrace and everlasting contempt." Wow. All right. So definitely speaking within a salvific sense, right? Even including the resurrection in the very next verse. All right. So little bit of commentary on that. So in the Old Testament, the book of life was a register of all those who held citizenship in the theocratic community of Israel. And then I would press that maybe that is still the same case if you were to read Romans, chapter 8 through 11. By 11, Paul is kind of unpacking this idea of the church in Israel. So I'll just throw that out there. You can read that on your own. "The idea was common in the secular world as well; when a criminal's name was removed from the civic register of an Asiatic town, he lost his citizenship." So it's kind of an interesting connection there that can, you know, the citizenship with Israel, the people of God. And then here, even common throughout Turkey, ancient, what was Turkey, Asia, Asia Minor, that, you know, a criminal could lose his citizenship by having his name struck from the ledger, from the register. So there's a scholar named Kerd suggests that John believes in a conditional predestination in which the decrees of God wait on the acceptance or rejection of each individual. "It is hermeneutically unsound to base theological doctrines solely on either parables or apocalyptic literature or imagery. Better to allow the text, even when theologically awkward, to present its own picture." So that was from Mounts. I definitely wanted to include that just for consideration, where as we are approaching different imagery, especially apocalyptic imagery, you know, is it fair to draw like deep, hard theological conclusions from that? But what we have here is Jesus threatening to blot them out of the book of life. So is this... At what level is it apocalyptic literature? Or just straight up a promise? "I am gonna do this if you continue down this path." Because remember, as we're approaching these letters, is this apocalyptic, or is this prophetic? Because we have all these different genres kind of intertwined in the book of Revelation. So just because I read that out, that view from Mounts, doesn't mean it has to be accepted. It's just, it's there to put into the mix and keep the water nice and muddy. So you can do with it whatever you want. But just for consideration. And if you didn't like what you were hearing, you just totally got it out. so finally, to the overcomer, Christ promises that he will acknowledge his name before his Father and the angels. This is a clear reflection of Matthew, chapter 10, verse 32. So let's go to the book of Matthew. The idea here is recognizing them before the Father. Verse 32, "Therefore, everyone who confesses me before men, I will also confess him before my Father, who is in heaven; but whoever denies me before men, I will also deny him before my Father, who is in heaven." Oh, man. All right. I think the hardest thing is when I'm reading some of these other verses, is just, where do I stop? I don't know. Maybe that's just me, but like, I just wanna keep reading. It's so good. All right, Luke, chapter 12, starting at verse 8. "And I say to you, Everyone who confesses me before men, the Son of Man." So just a slight difference here. That's why it's like, oh, Luke, it's saying the same thing. Yes, but no. It's not. Because now you have this, what we've already talked about, a very messianic title, right? I mean, it's so completely loaded, "the Son of Man," right? And here it is, Jesus identifying himself as such. Oh, wow. Just should carry even more weight now for us. "And I say to you, Everyone who confesses me before men, the Son of Man will confess him also before the angels of God; but he who denies me before men will be denied before the angels of God." And just reading on here. "And everyone who speaks a word against the Son of Man, it will be forgiven him; but he who blasphemes against the Holy Spirit, it will not be forgiven him. When they bring you before the synagogues and rulers and the authorities, do not worry about how or what you are to speak in your defense or what you are to say; for the Holy Spirit will teach you in that very hour what you ought to say." I mean, that just goes together so nicely. Yes. So the question is, what is the significance to him, to Jesus, recognizing us before the angels? Yeah, and I think the significance there, it's almost because of proximity. It's just, it would be accepted as the same thing, that they would recognize him. And as we're gonna see in the next few chapters, is that proximity is very close. And so as we see the people in white robes around the throne, or they're close to it, nobody who's not wearing a white robe is gonna be allowed. Right? And so, I mean, you gotta prevent, you know, some cleaning house from happening here. It's like, no, 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 they're with me. They're good, they're good, you know? And so, I mean, I don't know. I would want Jesus to recognize them, you know, and just be like, oh, okay, they're all with me. They have the white robes, you know? So, yeah, yes. And I think that very well could tie into that as well. We talked a little bit about that last week with the... I was just giving myself time to reframe that, you know? But, you know, could it also allude to recognizing, or these individuals being recognized by Jesus as able to judge the angels? And I think that easily could be part of that as well, in Jesus recognizing us, or those of us unto that, as, yep, they have that authority because I have given that to them. They have confessed me before men. I am confessing them before the Father. So, yeah, I think that's, I think that's absolutely in view within that. Okay, Mark, let's see, Mark, chapter 8.
We have a question on Zoom.
Oh, okay. "Is the reference of 'Son of Man,' any reference to Joseph, or is it to his human nature?" I'm trying to think back whether... I don't think there is a reference to Joseph, per se, but definitely to the human nature. And I think that's what makes that title so special for Jesus. I mean, kind of the ultimate curve ball, getting past the enemy here, is God sending his son to the earth in the form of a helpless human baby, right? The Creator, the one who all things have been created through the Word, now becomes flesh. And so even though this title, "Son of Man," was used in the prophets, here we have Jesus taking that on. And even throughout the prophetic books, we have the Son of Man having all of this eschatological ideology wrapped around it, right? The end times, this is gonna be like the bread and butter of the Messiah, the Son of Man. And so, yeah, I think when Jesus comes, it is just kind of this full, like, this beautiful irony, right? Where the divine is now a Son of Man, literally. Like, not figuratively, literally, right? And it's just beautiful. And so, yeah, I think it is absolutely to his human nature. So, no, that's good. Any other questions? Yes. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, could it be, could it also be stated as human, Son of a human, or some, yeah? Yep, absolutely. I mean, like in, probably not literally, but in what it is referring to, yes. So would that shoot that down? You know, once saved, always saved. So that, that's where we're going right now.
I don't know, I mean, I don't necessarily believe that.
Sure.
But that's kind of the background I came up in.
And I think that's where much of evangelical Christianity has grown up in. I mean, you know, really, just in the 20th century. So the idea of eternal security, that is primarily like the background of most Protestant churches, especially in the Midwest. So where do we wanna go with this?
I'm hoping you'll give me an answer.
Well, you know what? So it is not, there is not an official stance on eternal security by our church. And I highly recommend that everybody does their own research on it. I mean, and have an honest approach to it where... Because, and let me say this. Wherever you land on it, it doesn't compromise your salvation. Think about that one. I mean, I've read the Bible a few times, more than a few times. There doesn't seem to be a theology test after we die. Thank the Lord. Because I could only imagine, I mean, think about 2,000 years, the world over, and all the cultural influences and religious influences as well. Things that we've accepted as doctrine. I mean, just the, do, I mean, an analysis of the theological spectrum of the church, capital C. It's super diverse. And as much as people want to like slap the heretic, you know, title on so many, you know, it should, it should bring us to a point of like humility. And so even on issues like this, that sound so weighted and so dire and so divisive, it's one that we should approach with caution and humility. And to understand that there's verses, because I actually printed them out, that go both ways. That really do sound like, oh, yeah, eternal security. And then those, oh, no, not so much. You can be blotted out of the book of life. And so, so there's verses going both ways. And from a large cross-section of authors, too. So it's not just from Paul. It's not just from John. So I think all of that is very, very important to understand. And, I mean, I mean, I'm happy to read through these verses. I printed them off. I was anticipating this. I thought I got away with it. I guess not. Hey, quick show of hands, because it's my class. Quick show of hands, who wants me to read through these verses? That's quite a bit. I can, I can definitely print them off. I'll have them available next week. Definitely can't do it now, and I don't want to put David through that. But, but for next week, I'll have that. And, yeah. So, and, and like I said, a real quick Google search, and you can just bring those up, right? But just make sure you look up both sides, not just one. Yes, sir. Right, absolutely. So, so, so the idea here is, you know, the question is, as we've been talking through many of these letters, that the idea of the overcomer, right? And it doesn't mean that they're perfect, that once in or whatever else, and all of a sudden they're blotted out. That, that's not what this is saying. Like the things for being blotted out for are big and serious, and it's absolutely compromising your allegiance to Christ. You're basically denying Christ. That is exactly like where this pops up. So, yeah, and so, so for the overcomer, they are, you know, Jesus is encouraging the members of these churches to overcome in these certain areas. And a lot of times, it's overcoming the apostasy that is within their church. And so even the ones that maybe have fallen into it, he has still given them the opportunity to repent and get right with him. But if they refuse, they've already compromised their salvation. Right? So, yeah. So, okay, let me go ahead and read through these real quick, alright? Just because, so you can just chalk this one up to a little excursus. And if David, you would be so kind, maybe as we are uploading this, we could even separate this one out. We'll see. I don't know. Well, it depends on the follow-up questions. Alright, Galatians, chapter 5, verses 1 through 4. For freedom, Christ has set us free, stand firm therefore, and do not submit again to a yoke of slavery. Look, I, Paul, say to you that if you accept circumcision, Christ will be of no advantage to you. I testify again to every man who accepts circumcision, that he is obligated to keep the whole law. You are severed from Christ, you who would be justified by the law. You have fallen away from grace. Alright, Romans, chapter 11, verses 18 through 22. Do not be arrogant toward the branches. If you are, remember, it is not you who support the root, but the root that supports you. Then you will say, branches were broken off so that I might be grafted in. That is true. They were broken off because of their unbelief. But you stand fast through faith. So do not become proud, but fear. For if God did not spare the natural branches, neither will he spare you. Note then the kindness and the severity of God. Severity toward those who have fallen, but God's kindness to you, provided you continue in his kindness, otherwise you too will be cut off. That was Romans, chapter 11, verses 18 through 22. The first one I read was Galatians 5, verses 1 through 4. Revelation, chapter 22, verse 19. And if anyone takes away from the words of the book of this prophecy, God will take away his share in the tree of life and in the holy city, which are described in this book. So obviously the share in the tree of life being analogous to salvation. Revelation 22, 19. We're not there yet, by the way. And we won't be there before summer. Alright, 1 Corinthians, chapter 9, verse 27. But I discipline my body and keep it under control, lest after preaching to others, I myself should be disqualified. 1 Corinthians 15, 1 through 2. Now I would remind you, brothers, of the gospel I preached to you, which you received, in which you stand, and by which you are being saved, if you hold fast to the word I preached to you, unless you believed in vain. Colossians, chapter 1, verses 22 through 23. He has now reconciled in his body of flesh by his death, in order to present you holy and blameless and above reproach before him, if indeed you continue in the faith, stable and steadfast, not shifting from the hope of the gospel that you heard, which has been proclaimed in all creation under heaven, and of which I, Paul, became a minister. Hebrews, chapter 3, verse 6 and 14. But Christ is faithful over God's house as a son, and we are his house, if indeed we hold fast our confidence and are boasting in our hope. Verse 14, for we have come to share in Christ, if indeed we hold our original confidence firm to the end. Revelation, chapter 3, verses 1 through 5. By the way, we are still on the same verse that we started this class with. Just reminding you. Alright, Revelation, chapter 3, verses 1 through 5. And to the angel of the church and start us, right? Oh, yeah. Okay. This is what we read, right? So it'd be, let's see, let's skip down verse 5. The one who conquers will be clothed thus in white garments, and I will never blot his name out of the book of life. I will confess his name before my father and before his angels. 2 Peter, chapter 2, verse 20 through 22. For if after they have escaped the defilement of the world through the knowledge of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, they are again entangled in them and overcome, the last state has become worse for them than the first. For it would have been better for them never to have known the way of righteousness, than after knowing it, to turn back from the holy commandment delivered to them. What the true proverb says has happened to them. The dog returns to its own vomit, and the sow, after washing herself, returns to wallow in the mire. Matthew, chapter 24, verse 13. But the one who endures to the end will be saved. So you gotta endure to the end to be saved. 1 John, chapter 5, verses 4 through 5. For whatever is born of God overcomes the world, and this is the victory that has overcome the world, our faith. Who is he who overcomes the world? But he who believes that Jesus is the son of God. Alright, so here are the guarantee scriptures. So the once saved, always saved. Did anybody have any questions on the previous ones? Good. I'm here for you guys. So Hebrews, chapter 7, verse 23 through 25. The former priests were many in number because they were prevented by death from continuing in office. But he holds his priesthood permanently, he being Jesus, because he continues forever. Consequently, he is able to save to the uttermost those who draw near to God through him, since he always lives to make intercession for them. Hebrews, chapter 10, verses 11 through 15. And every priest stands ministering daily and offering repeatedly the same sacrifices, which can never take away sins. But this man, after he had offered one sacrifice for sins forever, sat down at the right hand of God, from that time waiting till his enemies are made his footstool. For by one offering he has perfected forever those who are being sanctified. So obviously the idea that if you are a believer in Christ, you are, have entered that channel of sanctification, right? 1 Peter, chapter 1, verse 23. Having been born again, not of corruptible seed, but incorruptible, through the word of God, which lives and abides forever. Channeling a little Sandlot there, forever. Because forever means forever, right? 2 Corinthians, chapter 1, verses 21 through 22. Now it is God who makes both us and you stand firm in Christ. He anointed us, set his seal of ownership on us, and put his spirit in our hearts as a deposit guaranteeing what is to come. I just want to remind you, Paul was responsible for half of the verses against eternal security. And Paul is responsible for about half of these as well. Go, Paul. That was 2 Corinthians, chapter 1, verses 21 through 22. Romans, chapter 8, verse 38 through 39. For I am sure that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor rulers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor powers, nor height, nor depth, nor anything else in all creation, will be able to separate us from the love of God, in Christ Jesus, our Lord. John, chapter 10, verse 27 through 29. My sheep hear my voice, and I know them, and they follow me. And I give them eternal life, and they shall never perish. Neither shall anyone snatch them out of my hand. My Father, who has given them to me, is greater than all, and no one is able to catch, to snatch them out of my Father's hand. We'll move on. Okay, I'll say, I wonder if Judas was there? Sorry. My bad. 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2, verse 16 through 17. I mean, okay, alright, alright. I said it, I did, I did, I said it, and I meant it because, like, we know what he's saying, but was he the son of perdition? He was already kind of like on that path? Is that why? I have my own questions. Because Jesus is saying this. And he's making it very clear. And a lot of people quote this verse. And you know me by now, like, I just want to bring that up, be like, what about Judas? So, yeah.
Isn't that verse saying that God loves us? Did it say, like, that we would have eternal?
No, no, right, absolutely. So the idea is like snatching them out of his hand and, you know, so, so there is this idea, what is generally communicated in the idea of eternal security, is that once you're in the hands of Jesus, then not letting, getting let go. So, that's but you can jump out of those hands. Squirrely. Alright, I'm gonna keep reading 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2, verses 16 through 17. Now may our Lord Jesus Christ himself, and God our Father, who loved us and gave us eternal comfort and good hope through grace, comfort your hearts and establish them in every good work and word. So basically, the idea is that it's God at work from start to finish. Ephesians, chapter 1, verses 13 through 14. In him you also trusted, after you heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation. In whom also, having believed, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise, who is the guarantee of our inheritance, until the redemption of the purchased possession, to the praise of his glory. 1 John, chapter 5, verse 11 through 13. And this is the testimony that God has given us eternal life, and this life is in his son. He who has the son has life. He who does not have the son of God does not have life. These things I have written to you, who believe in the name of the son of God, that you may know that you have eternal life, and that you may continue to believe in the name of the son of God. That's 1 John, chapter 5, verses 11 through 13. Once again, some of these are not real, like definitive, hard and fast, kind of eternal security, but these are ones that have been heard, like, pointing in that direction. Titus, chapter 3, verses 4 through 7. But when the kindness and the love of God, our Savior, toward man appeared, not by works of righteousness, which we have done, but according to his mercy, he saved us through the washing of regeneration and renewing of the Holy Spirit, whom he poured out on us abundantly through Jesus Christ our Savior, that having been justified by his grace, we should become heirs, according to the hope of eternal life. 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, verse 4 through 5. For we who are in this tent grown, being burdened, not because we want to be unclothed, but further clothed, that mortality may be swallowed up by life. Now he who has prepared us for this very thing is God, who also has given us the spirit as a guarantee. Alright, so those are all the ones that I came up with, that I found fairly quickly. And, and I'm sure there could be plenty of others, but I really do encourage you, I mean, okay, for what it's worth. Here's my perspective on this. This is not the perspective of the church. This is mine alone. And I don't know if, that's right, I'm standing up for this one. Sleeves are already rolled up. So, so I, because I've thought about this for a long time. And to fall on the side of eternal security, like, I guess I've always been in the mindset of operationally, what does this look like? Like what is going to bear fruit in my life? If I believe that it's good and done and signed sealed, what happens when I sin? How much remorse and repentance do I have from that? If I know I could do that as much as? I mean, is, is there a limit to this? Because if I really fall into that eternal security doctrine, then no, there's not a limit. Because there's nothing I can do to separate from that, because it's God at work in me. I know, all kinds of logical fallacies. But if I do hold to some of these scriptures of like, oh, you know what? I might not have a hard and fast definitive answer, but there's all of these talking about getting blotted out of the book of life, and some of these others that are pretty challenging, branches being broken off, and, oh, man, you know, and you've read the prophets, there's plenty of that language in there as well. And really, what is going to produce the righteousness that Christ wants in me? By forsaking and repenting of sin and walking that way, walking, following Jesus? And so even if I can hold these intention, and, and not to disappoint you, but that's what I do. It's not landing necessarily on one side, it's just holding these intention. And, and there's plenty of concepts throughout scripture where maybe instead of landing hard and fast on one side or the other, we can just hold things intention and understand the full spectrum of the argument and be like, well, okay, I don't want to play with fire over here, literally. And over here, I don't want to fall asleep and not have any level of effort, not to earn my salvation, but to live out my salvation. Not to discredit, disgrace the sacrifice of Jesus Christ. So what is going to produce fruit in my life? So once again, not earning my salvation, but at the same time, not forfeiting it either. Tension. If you're a kind of a black and white kind of person, I'm sure that just annoyed you to no end. Yes, sir. Yes, no, and absolutely, like, ah, right. Yes, yes, yes. I don't know if I want to though, no, I'm just kidding. And so didn't I, weren't we just talking over previous weeks, the Nicolaitans? And really, isn't that what I just kind of described by that idea of, oh, and really, it's that original heresy of shall, shall we sin, that grace may abound? Kind of this very libertine mindset of like, oh, well, the son of God died to atone for my sins. And, okay, I got a blank check here. Let's run up the tab throughout this life, and then boom. And that's the idea of what the Nicolaitans were doing. And so that is where I would push back if the doctrine of eternal security, or the idea of eternal security has so manifested that way in your life, then I would just say repent. Because obviously, that is not the intended fruit of Jesus laying down his life on your behalf, regardless of whatever doctrine. Because what we know is what he's accomplished, and he did not do that so that we would go on sinning. And scripture is very clear about that. We are called to be the overcomers. So, yeah, yeah, it totally ties in with the Nicolaitans. So, yeah, yeah, it totally ties in with the Nicolaitans. Yes. Isn't this where the Torah comes? Oh, we are to live as Jesus lived, the way, the truth, and the life. Thanks, Jim. No, um, so, yeah, and there's different perspectives on that in regards to Torah. And as it being, you know, the original definition of sin, that God had given to his people. And there's different perspectives on whether that was actually nailed to the cross. Or that, one, it is not a determining factor of salvation, but still a definition, a God-given definition, Moses didn't just make all this up, of what sin is and is not. Remember, love the Lord your God and love your neighbor. Those come from the Torah. Let's see, I think we had left off with Mark, chapter 8, verse 38. Once again, just kind of unpacking here, the, to the overcomer, Christ promises that he will acknowledge his name before his Father and the angels. So we've already read Matthew, chapter 10, verse 32. Luke, chapter 12, verse 8. And then here we are, Mark, chapter 8, verse 38. For whoever is ashamed of me and my words in this adulterous and sinful generation, the Son of Man will also be ashamed of him when he comes in the glory of his Father with the holy angels. And then back to Luke, chapter 9. I'm gonna start at 23. Because I can do that. And he was saying to them all, if anyone wishes to come after me, he must deny himself and take up his cross daily and follow me. For whoever wishes to save his life will lose it. But whoever loses his life for my sake, he is the one who will save it. For what is a man profited? If he gains the whole world and loses or forfeits himself? For whoever is ashamed of me and my words, the Son of Man will be ashamed of him when he comes in his glory and the glory of the Father and of the holy angels. But I say to you truthfully, there are some of those standing here who will not taste death until they see the kingdom of God. All right. All right. Revelation 3, verse 6. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. So we have the regular closing. Even though some elements have, were missing from the message to Sardis, as other places, we still have the same closing. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. All right, moving to Philadelphia, so that'll be in the next packet. Compared to the other ones? Does the word ashamed there in, in that verse, does that seem a little weak? Especially compared to some of the other ones? Yeah, it kind of does. But, you know, maybe that was the difference in the Gospel writer and, you know, framing it differently, and, you know, from the Greek and translating it into the English. So, and it'd be interesting, I mean, if anybody else had a different translation that maybe came off a little bit sterner, so. But still, I wouldn't want Jesus ashamed of me. And shame and honor culture, oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Excellent point. So that was, that was a very, very big deal. So. Okay, any other questions before we move into Philadelphia? So when we see all the parallel verses, yeah. That, yes. When we read ashamed, is that the same as denying Christ, right? Ashamed of Christ, denying Christ. And I, I think that's absolute, that's why I wanted to read, like, all four of those references, is just to kind of draw that comparison where it, it's basically saying the same thing. Right? If you are failing to, you know, confess that Jesus is Lord before others, if, you know, you are ashamed of him, he's gonna be ashamed of you to the Father. If you deny him, he's gonna deny you to the Father. So, well, that is the significance post-resurrection of Jesus restoring him three times. We'll call that executive pardon. Peter, Peter made amends. I mean, really, like, I mean, you know, to really think about that. Peter, who had walked with him, Peter, who had been so zealous for him, and, and then, I mean, to deny him three times, and then to realize only when, and I mean, mind you, he's denying him vehemently. I never knew him, you know? And all of a sudden, the rooster crows, and, like, he realizes, Jesus called this one. Like, that just makes it even worse. And so then, like afterwards, you know, Peter's running to the tomb, and there's all this other stuff, but it's only at this time that we see, like, Jesus approaching him, and, do you love me? Do you love me? Do you love me? You know? And there's obviously different parts that added to that, like in response, but, I mean, he's, he's asking him three times. So in that way, Jesus restores him. It, it's hard when there is narrative, and historical narrative, right? I mean, like, this is, this is what's been recorded for us, to draw theological conclusions out of that. That, that, it makes it difficult, right? I mean, you know, think back over your own lives and experiences, and what theological principles did you draw from? You know, pick a part in your life. So it's a little bit difficult to do that. So there's principles we live by, but like, as we look back and kind of create, like, that narrative of our own story, like, oh, that was redundant. Narrative of our own life, of, you know, what do we extrapolate from that theologically? It's a little bit messier, right? And so, I don't know. Any other questions? That was a great question. All right, Philadelphia, here we come. All right, so Philadelphia, here's the background. Modern Alasehir. Oh, you know what, let's go ahead and read the verses first. So that as I'm reading through this, you can already kind of make those connections. So Revelation, chapter 3, starting at verse 7. And to the angel of the church in Philadelphia write, he who is holy, who is true, who has the key of David, who opens and no one will shut, and who shuts and no one opens, says this. I know your deeds. Behold, I have put before you an open door, which no one can shut, because you have a little power and have kept my word and have not denied my name. Behold, I will cause those of the synagogue of Satan, who say that they are Jews and are not, but lie, I will make them come and bow down at your feet and make them know that I have loved you. Because you have kept the word of my perseverance, I also will keep you from the hour of testing, that hour which is about to come upon the whole world, to test those who dwell on the earth. I am coming quickly. Hold fast what you have, so that no one will take your crown. He who overcomes, I will make him a pillar in the temple of my God, and he will not go out from it anymore. And I will write on him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, the new Jerusalem, which comes down out of heaven from my God and my new name. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. Thank you. So, all right. Oh, plenty of stuff to dig into here. So Philadelphia, modern Alasehir, is a town located in the Manisa province, in the Aegean region of Turkey. So, oh, the map. Did I include that? Yes, I did! All right. It's been a couple of weeks since I put this together. So, all right, so Philadelphia here. So Pergamum, Thyatira, Sardis, and then Philadelphia here. Is the next one the more? Look at that. So mountains in the orange. So we have this valley here. We have the Lycas River. And so Philadelphia is further north in the valley, just down from Sardis. So remember, as the letter was being sent, this was a circuitous route all the way around. And that's why we're also ending at Laodicea. So. Oh, yeah, that's gonna be the next one. So here is Philadelphia here. And if I remember right, this map is actually like the thermal zones for earthquakes. So, and that's gonna factor pretty heavily. So. Okay, there's gonna be a fun little picture here. The one with the star, just wait for that one. Just wait for that one. I got commentary on that one specifically. So, all right. So the letter to Philadelphia contains no note of disapproval or reproach, although the believers may have been excommunicated from the local synagogue. Christ has placed before them an open door into the Messianic kingdom. They have remained faithful, and those who are not really Jews will be forced to come and acknowledge that God loves the Christian community. Because of their patient endurance, God will keep them from the coming time of trial. And as overcomers, they will take their place in the temple of God, sealed with his name. So Philadelphia lies at the eastern end of a broad valley that passing through Sardis, some 30 miles west by northwest, leads down to the Aegean Sea near Smyrna. Its location commanded high ground on the south side of the river Cogamus, a tributary of the Hermes. There's the strategic location at the juncture of trade routes leads to Maia, Lydia, and Phrygia. The imperial post route from Rome via Troas passed through Philadelphia and continued eastward to the high central plateau. And it had helped it earn the title Gateway to the East and made it a city of commercial importance. So as compared to Sardis, as compared to especially Thyatira, we are dealing with a very significant city here. So the great volcanic plain to the north, there's a great big word here. Katike Kamene, which means the burnt land, was fertile and well suited to growing grapes. But they actually had trouble growing trees there. With an economy based on agriculture and industry, Philadelphia enjoyed considerable prosperity. Its one major drawback was that it was subject to earthquakes. The devastating earthquake of 17 AD that leveled 12 cities of Asia overnight had been particularly severe on Philadelphia. Sardis suffered a lot of damage too, but Philadelphia was of more, of greater importance and sustained even greater damage. Perhaps because it was near the fault line and also suffered a long series of tremors that followed. With the defeat of Antiochus IV at Magnesia in 190 B.C., Lydia passed to Pergamum control. So Pergamum was actually in charge of that whole area by 190 B.C. But 17 AD, oh, I'm sorry. You know what, I had already jumped to like more ancient history here. But 17 AD earthquake was extremely severe. Just devastated the city, like, people started moving to the country after this. Like, out into the fields. That's how bad it was. The tremors had lasted for months, and some even think like continually. Like daily tremors, like severe ones. And there was a letter from Irenaeus, who is still making reference to this. There was other letters closer to the time. I'm sorry, not Irenaeus, Ignatius, who were writing and making reference to these tremors and how afraid the people were, just kind of set on edge. So a little bit further back here. Although Philadelphia is the most recently established of the seven cities of Revelation, there is some confusion as to whether Eumenes, the second king of Pergamum, or his younger brother Attalus II, Philadelphus, who reigned from 159 to 138 B.C., founded the city. What is certain is that its name commemorates the loyalty and devotion of Attalus II to his brother. This is what earned him the epithet Philadelphus, lover of his brother. Himer calls attention to two incidents of special note. One, a false rumor of Eumenes' assassination led Attalus to accept the crown, which he then relinquished when his brother returned from Greece. And second, Attalus's resistance to Roman encouragement to overthrow his brother and become king. Aw, brothers can get along. The city was probably founded between 189 B.C., when the region came under the control of Eumenes, and 138 B.C., when Attalus died. Although without doubt, it was built on the site of some earlier settlement. In its development, under Pergamum rule, that Philadelphia was intended to serve as a missionary city to bring Greek culture to the recently annexed area of Lydia and Phrygia. Dr. Ramsey indicates the success achieved by noting that before 19 AD, the Lydian tongue had been replaced by Greek as the only language of the country. So exporting Hellenistic culture, but then also the language as well. And so everybody starts speaking Greek pretty quickly. Following the great earthquake of 17 AD, it took the name of Neo Caesaria for a time in appreciation for the imperial help received for rebuilding. At a later date, under Vespasian, 69 to 79 AD, the name Flavia began to appear on coins. Philadelphia was remarkable for its many temples and religious festivals. For this reason, in the 5th century AD, it was called Little Athens. I heard that. Because it was located in a vine-growing district, the worship of Dionysius was its chief pagan cult. Dionysius, the party god. Wine, all kinds of other stuff. After Tiberius's help, it founded a cult of Germanicus, the adopted son and heir of the emperor. So, you know, if you, if you have to get special permission to worship the emperor there, to put up one of his temples, well, what's the second best option? That you maybe don't need to get permission for? Worship his son, right? Oh, all right. So, uh, let's see, we have between AD 211 and 217, a provincial temple to the imperial cult was built. And Philadelphia was honored with the title Neochorus, Warden of the Temple. So once again, we have pagan elements as well as imperial cult present in Philadelphia. Okay, let's go through a couple more pictures here. So this is what remains of Philadelphia. Those pillars are massive. And so even as we are gonna be reading through this description, right? What is Jesus promising? The overcomer will be a pillar, the temple of his God. There you go. It's pretty crazy to just see like, oh, look, an amphitheater, and then, oh, it's the city in the background. Like the modern city. Could you imagine if we had that here? Oh, man. So I've often said, like, if I was living in anywhere in that region, I would just be digging up my backyard every chance I had. I just would. I just would. Did you got a permit to dig here? Nope. I'm just curious. So some structures still, this is of the city itself. But you can see the topography, like, how rough that is. And some of the walls that are remaining.
Are the pillars the same that we saw in the previous picture?
No, those aren't. Those aren't the pillars. There's another shot there. And remember, this is a modern day Alasehir in Turkey. Okay, so let's, let's pause right here. So the eight-pointed star. And you can see the cross there and Greek script. So the Greek script with later Christian symbols and eight-pointed star. and eight-pointed star. Take note of the two stars beside the cross in the upper picture on the right. It is a star with eight points. Through the centuries, some churches adopted this symbol with origins in Babylon. The Babylonian goddess Ishtar had a star with eight points. This goddess became the Greek god Aphrodite. The Christians adopted this pagan symbol by connecting it with the eighth day of Jesus's baptism. Synchronism. Sorry. For this and other reasons, many churches began to build baptismal pools in the shape of an eight-pointed star. Notice the eight points on the baptismal font below. Next picture. And if you're like, Luke, how can anybody fit in that to be immersed? It's not how that works. And so, so that was actually like for, oh my goodness, sprinkling or pouring. So, yeah, the baptismal font today, pattern, the same pagan origin of an eight-pointed star. The last picture here, that's Arminian script. Just thought that was unique. So attention is often been called to the similarities between the letters to Smyrna and Philadelphia. Dr. Kittle, for example, points out that both are designed to strengthen the faithful, and in fact, point by point, cover the same ground. They are the two churches that receive unqualified praise from the Lord. Yay. Alright, any questions on that background? Yes. So, so the question is, is this the first reference to, like, the city of brother, like the full reference? Or because the title, Philadelphia, means brotherly love.
It was named after the brothers?
Yeah. Yeah. So it became synonymous with that, right? So, yeah. And then that's where our city, Philadelphia, came from, right? And to the angel of the church in Philadelphia, right? So we have the address and messenger formula here, verse seven. Oh, yeah, sure, sure. So the question is, when was the cross first used as a symbol?
As a symbol, yes.
Because this wouldn't have been the first time that it was used. There would have been other places. Now, at what year? I would actually. I don't want to tell anybody wrong. Like, I can research that, because that's pretty interesting. We definitely, it's not an early symbol of Christianity. Maybe you've heard of, you know, the fish, the ichthys, right? Very simple kind of loop there. And that was an early symbol. Minorid, there's different things like that that were symbolic for symbols used by Christians. The cross doesn't happen until much later on. And. I'm gonna research it just because, like, there are some theories of like synchronism happening. And so I want to be very sure of like, what dates, when, you know, what are the earliest ones found? And even just from the early church fathers, if there were references to that. You'll have to wait, come back next week and find out.
Well, I don't think you even know that.
Well, I think I do. I just wanna be sure before I. So, and mind you, like, when we're talking about the cross, it's not necessarily even that one. The other one where it's equal in length, that is the one that's a little bit more disconcerting than that. So. I mean, if you wanna look it up, Apollo, Mithras, both of them like have the starburst as a symbol. So, there you go. There's a little breadcrumb for you. Cross. There we go. Gotta write myself a note. Okay. So, address and messenger form. Any other questions? That's good. Man, there's a few stumpers tonight. That's, that's pretty good. Good job, guys. So, I'm gonna sleep good tonight. After the coffee wears off. Address and messenger formula. And to the angel of the church in Philadelphia, right, "He who is holy, who is true, who has the key of David, who opens and no one will shut, and who shuts and no one opens," says this. So apparently, all suitable phrases from the vision of chapter one have been used up. So from other sources, the speaker identifies himself as the true Messiah, who controls access to the eternal kingdom. While the NIV uses holy and true to describe the risen Christ, a more literal translation of the Greek text is the Holy One, the True One. Does anybody else have any other translations? New American standard is, "He who is holy, who is true." Alright. So in Jewish culture, the Holy One was a familiar title for God. And a few references here. Isaiah, chapter forty, verse twenty-five. And I'll just give these to you. Habakkuk, chapter three, verse three. Mark, chapter one, verse twenty-four. John, chapter six, verse sixty-nine. First Clement, twenty-three, verse five.
First what?
Clement. So here it is, "joined with the True One and applied to Christ." In Revelation, chapter six, verse ten, "They are combined to further describe God, described God just addressed as sovereign Lord." If "true" is taken in the classical sense of genuine, it may be used in chapter three, verse seven, "to refute those Jews of Philadelphia who would claim that Christ was a false Messiah." If it is taken in the Old Testament sense of faithful, it could serve to remind the believers at Philadelphia that not only has Christ been set apart, the root meaning of Heios, to carry out His messianic task, but that He can be counted on to carry it to completion. And you know what? I cannot. Remember, if this comes up later on. But there was actually a little bit of imperial drama around the rebuilding of Philadelphia. After seventeen A.D., by ninety A.D., the city was still not rebuilt. A lot of the promised funding from emperor to emperor, like, wasn't coming through. And so there was a lot of frustration with the emperor because Rome wasn't living up to what it had promised. And so once again, the faithful one, right? The true one, who is going to follow up on His word as opposed to the emperor and any association with the emperor cult. So, it's kind of a neat little jab there. That's alright. We can see it as that. Totally a jab. There's been plenty of, plenty of those in these letters, right? So. Alright, "Christ is next described as having the key of David, a metaphorical expression indicating complete control over the royal household. Specifically in view of the following clauses, it means the undisputed authority to admit or exclude from the new Jerusalem." The background is the Oracle against Shebna, Hezekiah's Major Domo. Isaiah, chapter twenty-two, verses fifteen through twenty-five. So let's go to Isaiah, chapter twenty-two. So Shebna, who was to be removed from office and replaced with Eliachim. So thus says Yahweh Shavuot, God of hosts, "Come, go to this steward, to Shebna, who is in charge of the royal household. What right do you have here? And whom do you have here? That you have hewn a tomb for yourself here? You who hew a tomb on the height..." I feel like I'm reading Dr. Seuss here. Getting tongue-tied. "...you who carve a resting place for yourself in the rock. Behold, Yahweh is about to hurl you headlong, O man, and he is about to grasp you firmly and roll you tightly like a ball. To be cast into a vast country, there you will die, and there your splendid chariots will be. You shame of your master's house, I will depose you from your office, and I will pull you down from your station. Then it will come about in that day that I will summon my servant Eliachim, the son of Helchiah, and I will clothe him with your tunic and tie your sash securely about him. I will entrust him with your authority, and he will become a father to the inhabitants of Jerusalem and to the house of David. Then I will set the key of the house of David on his shoulder. When he opens, no one will shut. When he shuts, no one will open. I will drive him like a peg in a firm place, and he will become a throne of glory to his father's house. So they will hang on him all the glory of his father's house, offspring and issue, all the least of vessels from bowls to all the jars. In that day, declares Yahweh Shavuot, "The peg driven in a firm place will give way. It will even break off and fall, and the load hanging on it will be cut off, for Yahweh has spoken."
Where did you start?
I started with verse fifteen. Fifteen through twenty-five. So, the authority, basically, that key of David is the authority that is being given to the one managing the household. So concerning the new chief steward, the text says, "I will place on his shoulder the key to the house of David. What he opens, no one can shut; and what he shuts, no one can open." It's in verse twenty-two. So the language of Isaiah is used to present Christ as the Davidic Messiah, with absolute power to control entrance to the heavenly kingdom. It may be an intentional contrast with the practice of the local synagogue in excommunicating Christian Jews. You're gonna put them out? Well, great. I'm not gonna let you in. So, Strengths, chapter three, verse eight. "I know your deeds. Behold, I have put before you an open door, which no one can shut, because you have a little power and have kept my word and have not denied my name." Preliminary problem in verse eight is the punctuation of the first clauses. The ASV considers, "Behold, I have set before thee a door opened, which no one, which none can shut," parenthetical. Commentators who follow this punctuation take the following conjunction, ho ti, as declarative and the remainder of the verse as detailing the deeds that Christ knows. If a major stop occurs after deeds, then the conjunction is better translated "because" and supplies the reason for the open door being placed before the church. So it's kind of like, okay, what impact do the deeds have? Figured this group would wanna know that, since we've been talking about it for a couple weeks. The NIV takes the first four words as a complete sentence. And after the somewhat parenthetical statement repeats, "I know," from the first sentence, and carries on that you have little strength. This is the most satisfying solution to the syntactical problem. So, full disclosure, if you're into that and the word studies and the structure, you can just know that there's been a little bit of moving some stuff around just to make it make sense. The idea is still there. But what we're dealing with in this first part is still a little, little difficult, a little rough for scholars to understand. Most of the discussion centers on the meaning of the open door. That's why this is important. The more common interpretation is that it denotes a great opportunity for missionary activity. Paul uses the metaphor in this way. He writes to the Corinthians of his plan to stay in Ephesus until Pentecost because "a great door for effective work has opened to me." 1 Corinthians, chapter sixteen, verse nine. Paul also makes reference to it in 2 Corinthians, chapter two, verse twelve, and Colossians, chapter four, verse three. Once again, a metaphor that he enjoys using. Dr. Ramsey explains the expression in terms of Philadelphia's geographic position at the eastern end of the valley leading up onto the great central plain. As the keeper of the doorway of the plains, or I'm sorry, the keeper of the gateway to the plateau, it has been given a unique opportunity to carry the gospel to the cities of Phrygia. A different interpretation, however, fits the context better. The preceding verse spoke of a messianic kingdom whose access was under the absolute control of Christ. He is the one who possesses the key and can open and shut at will. Now in verse eight, he reminds the Christians at Philadelphia, who may have been excommunicated from the local synagogue, that He has placed before them an open door into the eternal kingdom, and no one can shut it. Dr. Roloff writes that Jesus has opened the door to the kingdom of God to this church. No matter if the door to the synagogue has been closed, the door into the messianic kingdom remains open. Christ recognizes that although they have but little strength, and it was probably a fairly small congregation, and they had not made a major impact upon the city, they have faithfully kept His word and not denied His name. The two aorous verbs point to a particular period of trial in the past. So they had remained faithful. In the remainder of the letter, we will learn the threefold reward for faithfulness, vindication before their foes, verse nine, deliverance in the final period of testing, verse ten, and security in the coming age, verse eleven. Any questions on that before we move into verse nine? We're just moving right along here. Reward and challenge to overcome, verses nine through twelve. "Behold, I will cause those of the synagogue of Satan, who say that they are Jews and are not, but lie. I will make them come and bow down at your feet and make them know that I have loved you." So verse nine takes us to the heart of a serious conflict between church and synagogue in Philadelphia. Now, obviously, this is assuming that the synagogue here, or these who say they're Jews are not, like, it is all associated with the local synagogue and things like that. So there are some basic assumptions with this. Verse nine takes us to the heart of the serious conflict between church and synagogue in Philadelphia. The Jewish population was convinced that by national identity and religious heritage, they were the people of God. Not so claimed the Christians. Had not Paul, alluding to Deuteronomy, chapter thirty, verse six, taught that "a man is not a Jew if he is only one outwardly; a man is a Jew if he is one inwardly; and circumcision is circumcision of the heart." Romans, chapter two, verses twenty-eight through twenty-nine. "It was the church that could now be called the Israel of God." Galatians, chapter six, verse sixteen. And once again, I would refer you to Romans eight through eleven. "For the Jewish nation had forfeited that privilege by disbelief. Members of the local synagogue may claim to be Jews, but the very claim constitutes them liars. By their slander and persecution of Christians, they have shown themselves to be the synagogue of Satan. Jesus had said to hostile and unbelieving Jews, 'You belong to your Father, the devil.'" John, chapter eight, verse forty-four. "And later in Revelation, Satan is labeled the accuser of our brothers." Chapter twelve, verse ten. Little wonder that their synagogue was called the synagogue of Satan. As in the preceding verse, the syntax of verse nine is somewhat awkward. The initial clause in Greek may be expanded to read, "I give to you those of the synagogue of Satan." The NIV translates it, "I will make those who are of the synagogue of Satan, so as to parallel the later, 'I will make them to come and fall down at your feet.'" The intervening phrases describes those persons. The intervening phrases describes those persons as falsely claiming to be Jews. The major question is whether they are given in the sense of becoming converts to the Christian faith or given in the sense that they will finally come to understand that you, the church, are my beloved people. And what's at the heart here is not them being less Jewish, it's them accepting Jesus as a Messiah. Like, that's the difference. The first alternative supports the interpretation of the open door as a missionary opportunity, but we have already shown that to be less probable. Once again, an eschatological interpretation is to be preferred. Isaiah, chapter sixty, verse fourteen. Let's go there. Isaiah, chapter sixty, verse fourteen. "The sons of those who afflicted you will come bowing to you, and all those who despised you will bow themselves at the soles of your feet, and they will call you the city of Yahweh, the Zion of the Holy One of Israel." Seems pretty relevant. So this represents the post-exilic confidence that the restoration of Israel, with the restoration of Israel, the nations would come to honor and serve the people of God. The nations will bring their wealth to Israel, become their servants, and acknowledge their God. And we can see this in Isaiah, chapter forty-five, verse fourteen. Also, Isaiah, chapter two, verse three. Isaiah forty-nine, verse twenty-three. And Zechariah, chapter eight, verse twenty. Let me just say that these are the interesting ones that, like, if you're looking stuff up, I know, it's easy to look up the ones in the Gospels, and those are fun. But like, I don't know if you've read the minor prophets or the major prophets lately, but there is so much being drawn out and that informs a lot of what we're reading in Revelation. I mean, remember, like, when we're talking about Isaiah, when we're talking about the minor prophets, I mean, anytime Zechariah is mentioned, or Zephaniah, or Joel, remember, that's like revelation for the apostles. Like, their whole mindset of what happens at the end comes from the major and minor prophets. So in the same way that Revelation has kind of been this, like, woo, scary book, you know, all this stuff's gonna happen. Well, that's kind of how they saw. I mean, they didn't see it like that because they actually revered that and read it and meditated on it. And, I mean, and it was a source of hope for them. And I know for many Christians, like, ah, can we just skip most of this to the end where, like, we're with the Lord and everything's good? Like, you know, all this stuff about the beast and the false prophet? Like, let's just skip over that to the end. Right. So like, that's kind of how it was for them, where they're reading this and they're like, oh, oh, we've been persecuted all our lives for generations, but yet, we're gonna come out on top. And all the nations, everybody that's ever subjugated us, are gonna come and bow at our feet, and they're gonna serve us. Oh, that's in there? Yeah, it really is. And so then what does that mean for us who have been grafted into the nation of Israel? That's why it's important for us to, like, understand. And that's, you know, Romans eight through eleven. And like, this is a part of Paul's theology, his theology of the church, of our identity in the Messiah. So it's a big deal. So these verses, I know, I mean, that's a fun morning devotional right there. You might just walk with your head a little bit higher, you know? They're other than, like, wow, this is interesting. So, all right. So now in what Dr. Moffett calls the grim irony of providence, what the Jews fondly expected from the Gentiles, they themselves would be forced to render to the Christians. Now, I just, once again, just kind of, it's important to understand that this isn't a Jew versus Gentile. There were more Jews who had come to faith in Messiah at this time than Gentiles. Okay? And now, that definitely changes by the second century. So it's not like, oh, the Gentiles good, Jews bad. Remember, Jesus is Jewish. All the apostles are Jewish. The first, like, four or five generations of the church are Jewish. Now, it quickly moves to the Gentiles, and the Gentiles quickly outnumbered the Jews after that first century. But the first seventy years of the church is primarily Jewish. The teachers, the elders, the overseers, Jewish. They're not letting some pagan worshiper come in off the street who just accepted Jesus and be like, hey, wanna lead our church? That's not happening. All the scrolls are still in Hebrew. No, there's Greek ones. But still, like, they're not just coming in and being like, okay, where are we reading from today? You know, they're learning. They're learning for many years to understand the scriptures, to understand the Messiah that they've come to believe in. And so this is, this is a problem because what you have are some Jews who have been removed from the synagogue because they claim Jesus as the Messiah. And then all the Jews, like, that's how, I'm standing up again. So that's how divisive, like, Jesus really is. Because nobody just claims to be the Messiah. For Jesus to say, for to do the things he did, and for the apostles to go and preach Jesus as the Messiah, the Son of God, that was a, like, there was no middle ground on that. None. You claimed him to be the Messiah? There were consequences to that. You would immediately be removed from fellowship. In the same way that an elder or somebody on staff here would be like, oh, Jesus is not the Messiah. You're gone. Or, do not pass go, do not collect two hundred dollars. I mean, like, that's how, like, black and white divisive this issue would be. Like, there's no middle ground on that. Oh, well, you know what? Let's talk about this a little more at the next elder meeting. You know, that's not gonna happen. Or in staff meeting, you know? Like, somebody says, Jesus is not the Messiah. Well, there's a problem here. And we're taking care of this today. So like, that's how it was for them, for them to say. And mind you, like, that reputation had already gotten out. They had already heard about this Jesus. And they had already made up their mind whether he was the Messiah or not. And so when we see Paul going around and preaching the gospel, sharing this good news, and possibly we have these gospel accounts floating around, and they're reading it, and they're like, oh, I think this Jesus really is the Messiah. I'm gonna go talk to my rabbi about this. And that rabbi, and mind you, there were synagogues that converted. Whole synagogues. How awesome is that? So when we're reading here and it says Christians, don't just automatically think Gentiles. I mean, because the issue here is that Jews were being put out of the synagogue. And probably some of the Gentile proselytes, the converts, they were being removed, or God-fears. They were being kicked out. So then they were meeting somewhere else. But imagine growing up here at CCC, and all of a sudden, there's an issue. I mean, I think I brought this up before. Imagine if Jesus comes back in a totally different way than what you've ever heard, right? What if, instead of like, on the clouds, it was in an airplane? From Korea. Coming out of the West, right? And all of a sudden, like, lands and gets off and saying, oh, yeah, I'm the Messiah. What? But then again, like, what if it's true? And what if, like, all of a sudden, there's gonna be some very clear opinions on this? Because that is not the interpretation that I had from Scripture, that I've been taught, that the church has had forever. Oh, is this sounding like the first century all over again? I'm not saying, I am not saying that's how Jesus is coming back, but... But to just kind of change our reference point and to understand just how really, just, I mean, wonky this all is. In the first century, I mean, Jesus came in the most unexpected way. Yes, there was an idea out there about, you know, Messiah bin Joseph, Messiah, son of Joseph, the suffering servant, who was gonna come and suffer to save his people, right? Just in the same way that Joseph in the Old Testament did. But it was a minority. Like, they knew about it, but, eh, you know. That's not what they were looking for. Why? Because Rome was ruling over them. They were wanting Messiah, son of David, to come and liberate them. So when that didn't happen, and, by the way, the guy that you're claiming to be the Messiah died a criminal's death on a cross. He got executed by Rome. I don't care what the rumors are that happened after. My Messiah is not dying like that. I mean, this is an uphill battle to sell this, right? To convince all of these people who had been studying and learning the scriptures for years. So it would be in the same way of me trying to convince you that Jesus is Korean and flying in. And it's gonna...
Keep going.
No, I'm not gonna keep going. And so, I mean, it's that level of, like, difficulty, okay? So just understanding that, and that's a little bit of a glimpse of, like, in the first century, how difficult this is. But, and how divisive Jesus really was and is today. So, so it, yeah. We should be just a little bit, like, more understanding what we're talking about and not just think, like, oh, Gentiles versus Jews. Like, this should not turn into anything anti-Semitic at all. Because the Christians that we're talking about here are Jews that had been kicked out. Questions? I'm sure there's a lot of questions. So were there any Jews at Pentecost that would be present in Philadelphia and still alive at this point? I can't give a definitive no, and I can't give a definitive yes just because we don't have Philadelphia mentioned. Asia is mentioned in the Pentecost list of countries, regions being represented. But Philadelphia specifically is not. And could they have been alive at that time? Yeah, I mean, John's writing. And we know John was probably really young during the ministry of Jesus, but then continued on, you know, lived to ninety-something A.D. So can't give a definitive answer on that, but I always liked, I mean, when I'm reading through, you know, the Acts two account, like, I'm trying to think of, like, all those different cities, you know, throughout those regions that, like, became important maybe later on or, you know, within that first hundred years of the church. Because it started there in Jerusalem, before the apostles ever, like, go. Before Paul ever makes his rounds, other people were going and breaking ground in their local synagogues and taking the gospel with them, being like, you know, man, you missed the best Pentecost ever. What'd I miss? Everything. The Messiah came. I mean, these backwater, you know, Galilean fishermen were speaking in our language. I mean, granted, they had an accent, kind of a southern draw to it, but, like... But, you know, I heard them in our language. I can still understand it. It was a little weird, but, like, and I knew that they weren't, they didn't know those languages, but they were speaking. They were claiming that it was the Holy Spirit of God. I mean, that made me a believer right off the bat, at least, you know, enough to listen. At first, I just thought they were drunk, right? Like, that's the account. And it's like, hey, it's nine AM. We're not drunk, guys, you know? And he goes on to share the gospel. What happened with Jesus? And so, you know, I like to think that, like, there was many of those that came. And I mean, all the, we actually just read it as a family not too long ago. And a lot of those regions, I mean, you're talking about North Africa. You're talking about all around modern-day Turkey and even up, you know, north of that. So it's really, it's really exciting to kind of see that list and to know before the apostles ever go, there were others that were going home and taking the gospel with them. So in thirty-three A.D., you know, if that's the day, you know, hold to the crucifixion and the resurrection and the ascension and Pentecost, like, within a couple of months of Jesus's resurrection, within a couple of months of his ascension, like, the gospel's already going out throughout the known world, right? So...